This time, I would like to call the order with December 10th, Macon County Board of Commission meeting. I, uh, I'd like to welcome our newly effect newly elected Commissioner, Mr. Barry Breeden. And I want to thank each of you for coming out tonight and, uh, being here with us. So I want to do announcements a little bit different. I would like to start over here with Ms. Tammy, and let's just kind of work like a snake. And let's just, each of us, if you have an announcement, please make it. If not, please just defer to the next person beside you.
I will defer.
I actually have a couple. Last week, I failed to express my appreciation to Ingles. They Ingles grocery store folks let us use their vacant building over at Holly Springs for our disaster recovery center. So I want to publicly tell them how much we appreciated that for allowing us to use that. Something for the board to consider, the Town of Highlands is working towards setting up a joint meeting with you all in February. It's probably going to be the second week of February. We think it's probably going to be the Thursday of that week, which is February the 13th. It's a joint meeting with Town of Franklin, Town of Highlands, and Macon County. So if you would just kind of be thinking about that, and Josh Ward's supposed to confirm that with me in the next day or two. And then this second one's almost more of a report, but I just wanted to let the board know Veteran Services Office did a veteran stand down on November the 14th. That was actually a rain date because the first one got rained out because of Helene. It actually rained that day. Lee sent us a report, and they served 142 veterans that day. And that's on a rainy day. But here, here's the most important thing. When you think about the decisions you make, she served people from 13 counties. So if you ever think that the decisions we make just affect Macon County, they affect a lot more folks. That, that's over 10% of the counties in North Carolina. So I thought that was pretty significant for those folks. So, so my appreciation to those folks.
Thank you. Mr. Breeden?
I really don't have any announcements, but I would like to say thank you to, to everyone for the support. Appreciate everyone coming out and just excited to be here. It's an honor. Appreciate it.
Ms. Antoine?
I'm just excited to have Mr. Breeden along with us, and thank you all for being here tonight.
I would just like to ask everyone to please keep the family of Mr. Tom James in your prayers.
Glad to have a new chairman here. Also, Tom James is a veteran. He's also Rotarian with some of us in there. And we received this information, I received it 20 minutes ago, that Tom passed away. And we'd like to remember his family. Last week or before this, on the announcement piece and updates, number two, a lot of, sometimes the board members have questions. And if you want to email me a question or Mr. Cave a question, and let us research it so we can bring the answer back to you during, during the board meeting on this. And we don't have to invite so many people to come to explain that. We'll go out and research it and see what the answer is. And in our last meeting, well, they have an announcement first. Our senior citizens, 8:30 Friday morning, 13th, will have a wreath display. Is that right? John and I did it last year. Hope you can come at the senior citizens, uh, 8:30, and we'll, they'll display the wreath. That's the announcement part. I'd just like to update you on Franklin High School. If you haven't been there, uh, big, the big machinery's been there this week, clearing off of property and stuff like that. But also, at the same time, we are going to be moving one of our, it was called BFS, Bigger Faster Stronger program, uh, weight program. It's the lifting weights program that we have at Franklin High School for male and female. And, uh, on the, uh, let's see, this, this coming Monday, next Monday, LBJ, who I'm a liaison with, will come together with the high school to help them move those weights over to Macon Middle School. And while we were doing that, uh, we put flooring down at To Make a Middle School to absorb the weights. And that's been done through Tascieter Flooring. We've got about 75% of it down on the floor at To Make a Middle School. We still have some, uh, I'm trying to see what name of fashioners that we've got, uh, they've got to come from Canada. And so, but we're making, uh, headway on that program. Some people had questions about Macon Middle School track. It's in the sealing process at this time. Did you give anything else? It's in the, and so, uh, if there's other questions, uh, let's see, I'm looking through here. There was some major questions I had in the last few days of Mr. Cave and, and Jack Morgan. We've researched them out and got an answer for them. And so, uh, if, if you have questions, send it to emails to Mr. Cave or myself, and we'll try to find the answer for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
I really don't have an announcement, Mr. Chairman, but I'd just like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, so I don't forget at the end of the meeting to do so.
That's good though for all of us.
And thank you for being here.
Mrs. Laurie, Mr. Legal Counsel. At this time, I'd like everyone to stand, observe a moment of silence, and I would ask Commissioner Sherrill to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving right along. We have no public hearings tonight. We move to the public comment period. Mrs. Mary Ann Ingram. Just a reminder, please, uh, Mary, state your address for the record books as you address the mic. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mary Ann Ingram. I live at 115 Autry Road in Franklin, North Carolina for the, since 1996. And I've been here since 94. Anyway, tonight, again, I am the Lorax, and I speak for the trees and all of these. And I have a question. Mr. Shields, you brought this up some months ago about that you wanted to hear the other side. And my question has been ever since that moment, is there another side? And my question is, with the counties around us, who have already stated that we had a great, we have a great, um, what is it called? My brain has lost it. Regulations for soil and water and for taking care of our county. And if that is good, if it ain't broke, why are we wanting to fix it? And has the, has someone or something been presented to you guys to say, we need to change this? Because you're wanting to change it? Why? What, what has brought this to your attention to make these changes in these regulations? I mean, you've had people come up in the past months who have all of the data that they've presented to you. They've presented documentation to you? And yet, that's still not enough? And I'm just questioning, why are we even looking at this if there's no one or no thing been presented to change it? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary Ann. All right. Melanie McMillan?
Hello. Hello, Melanie. I live on 57 Lloyd Stewart Lane in Franklin. Um, and I'm here just to say that I'm opposed to any changes for the floodplain ordinance. So I have a couple words. So I grew up in eastern North Carolina. I went to Appalachian State for my undergraduate degree in biology. I traveled across the U.S. working in aquatic systems, ranging from the most beautiful Montana wilderness to the most urbanized streams in California. I went back to school to get my master's at Virginia Tech, where I researched the effects of coal mining on headwater streams. The experiences of my life and career are what brought me here to Macon County, because I felt this county embodies the things that matter most to me. My fiance and I chose this area to settle down because we were able to find jobs here in conservation, find land to start a family and a community that made us feel like we were a part of something bigger and that shared our values. And I feel that that community has repeatedly showed up against the amendments, and, um, it's starting to feel like maybe our voices aren't being heard. So these kind of things we have in place have helped preserve Macon County and kept it such a special and safe place. And that was done by individuals who cared deeply for their homes. This is not becoming any less important to me. I've chosen to dedicate my career to freshwater conservation, and this experience has filled me with grief. I have gone to as many of the meetings as I could since this all began. And I was hopeful that this county was a county that cared about keeping people safe and healthy and keeping our land as beautiful as God intended, hopefully. And that hope is being, um, removed as I stand here and every time that I have had to sit in this crowd. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie.
Matthew Vargas.
I live on 83 Deerfield Ridge. I have, since I've been born. I'm also here to talk about the floodplain ordinance changes. If you remember, at one of the first meetings where this was the main topic of discussion, there were so many people that we had to move to one of the rooms upstairs. And even then, the room was filled, and people were spilling out into the hallway. At that meeting, one of the speakers asked that everybody, or asked for everybody who opposed the changes if they would stand, and nearly everyone did. I felt like that's in a pretty clear message, that everybody who has an opinion or who this matters to is, the vast majority of them are against these changes. Also, as you know, many professionals have been coming up here to speak to you over the course of these meetings to, you know, explain why these changes aren't only, um, aren't only not beneficial, but are damaging. And it's for these reasons that I'm also against these floodplain ordinance changes. And I would hope that all of you would take these two facts into consideration as you make more decisions regarding our ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mrs. Tammy, that's all that signed up to speak. Any additions to the agenda? Anyone? All right, hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to a second.
You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Reports and presentations, 2024 fiscal year audit.
Good evening. My name is Jill Vang, and I'm from Martin Starnes and Associates. And I'll be presenting the fiscal year 2024 audit of financial statements, and your audit has been submitted and approved by local government commission. I'm going to start off with some audit highlights. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get, and it means that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects and conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. The general fund had a $3.3 million increase in fund balance, or 6.4%. And the solid waste fund had an $854,000 increase in net position, or at 21.3%. This slide shows the total fund balance in your general fund over the past three years. And as I mentioned before in the previous slide, the total fund balance in the general fund increased $3.3 million, or 6.4%. You can see that it's, uh, it's been going up the past three years. This slide shows the available, available fund balance in the general fund. The available fund balance is a calculation utilized as a basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentages. In 2024, the available fund balance was at $49.3 million, which was an increase of $3.7 million from the prior year. This slide shows available fund balance plus the debt service fund balance as a percentage of net expenditures. In 2024, it was at 85.62%. The average of similar units are at 39%. And the LGC is usually concerned with an available fund balance percentage of less than 20%. So the county is above those two percentages. This slide shows the general fund revenues and expenditures for 2023 and 2024. Note that the above information does not include other financing sources such as your transfer ends and transfers out, any of your long-term debt proceeds. So those are not included. Revenues have increased 2.1% or $1.4 million from prior year, and the increase was mainly in your adven-orm taxes and interest earnings. Expenditures increased 4.1, 4.5%, or about $2.6 million increase from prior year. And the increases were noted mainly in the general government department, public safety, and the transportation departments. This slide shows the revenues, uh, revenue sources in the general fund. The top three revenue sources were the adven-orm taxes at 52%, the restricted intergovernmentals at 13%, and your local option sales tax at 21%. And then we'll look at the top three revenues in the next few slides. Adven-orm taxes increased by $938,000 or 2.7%, which is considered comparable to the prior year. Restricted intergovernmental revenues decreased by $159,000 or 1.7%, and that's also comparable. Local option sales tax decreased $393,000 or 2.7%, and it's also comparable to prior Now, we're going to look at the expenditures in the general fund, and then the top three expenditures were public safety at 31%, human services at 21%, education 19%. We'll also look at the top three expenditures in the next few slides. Public safety expenditures increased by $827,000 or 4.6%. Human service expenditures increased $38,000 or 0.3%, so a slight increase from prior The education expenditures decreased by $196,000 or approximately 1.7%, and that's also comparable to prior year. Now, we're going to look at overview of the solid waste fund. Cash decreased $367,000 or 2.5% from prior year. The GAAP net income increased mainly due to the decrease in the landfill closure and post-closure costs, and that's related to the full accrual adjustment of the liability. The cash basis net income was lower, the prior, is lower than prior year due to increase of operating expenditures in the current year. And that cash basis net income does not include items such as depreciation, changes in post-closure costs, and any of the capital outlay, debt service payments, or any of the other post-employment benefits. And then the cash flows from operations did decrease low from prior year, mainly due to decreases in revenues received. An unrestricted net position decreased due to the increase in the other component of the net position of the investment, invest, net investment capital assets. In fiscal year 2024, we tested four major programs. It was the Medicaid Cluster, the COVID-19 Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, the NC Lottery Fund, and the State Capital Infrastructure Fund. The Medicaid Cluster did have one significant deficiency finding, which is detailed in your audit report, and then there were no findings in the other three programs. Now, we're going to look at some financial performance indicators that are noted on the LGC's data input sheet. A data input sheet is also required to be submitted to local government commission along with the audit report. The county did not have any negative performance indicators this year, but I wanted to point out some of the positive performance indicators that are noted on the data input sheet. They are that the audit report was submitted timely to the local government commission. As discussed earlier, the county's general fund available fund balance percentage was at 85.62%, which is above the minimum of the 20%. And the county also has a stable property tax collection percentage at 98.63%. And I just want to allow you guys, uh, thank you for allowing us to service your auditors this year, and I want to thank Lori and her staff for always being pleasant to work with. And we appreciate, um, this time. Are there any questions?
I have two quick questions.
Okay.
I have to ask about the Medicaid deficiency.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yes. So that was related to eligibility. That was related to eligibility. The, when we test it, we test for controls and compliance. So the control part of it was that they had transposed some numbers, and so what was the actual income was not what was entered into, um, NC FAST correctly. But ultimately, throughout our tests, we also test to make sure that they're still eligible. And so ultimately, the individual was still eligible, but it was just the control part of it where they should have had a second eye look over, they had transposed some numbers.
Clerical.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And then do you have, um, our actual fund balance with allocation to the Franklin High School? Do we know what's not been allocated? Ms. Laurie? Ms. Jill? Look, it could be a little misleading.
Yeah, but what she reported on, what the total fund balance she reported on, and she also, the LGC now takes your general fund balance, plus your debt service fund balance. That's one of the performance indicators they can figure. But our available fund balance, which is what we monitor, was $48.8 million, or 73% of expenditures transfers out. And as you'll recall, when Mitch Bruglio was here a few months back, when we were looking at CIP, Franklin High School, Highland School project, all the other various capital projects, $20 million of that fund balance is going to be needed to carry us forward the next several years. So in the June 30, 24 audit, we didn't move any yet.
That's where I'm going.
So, yeah. This year, of course, y'all have already appropriated $8 million plus to Highland School, so that will definitely lower our fund balance for the 6/30, 25. And as we move forward, needed part of that 20 million, as the time arises, it will decline over the next few years.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Shields said. Our finance staff, I've always worked with them on the departmental side, and since I've been here, I, I'm 100% confident in our finance staff and the work that they do. And I can assure you that I think we've proven that we're, we're in a very good position with the folks that manage our money.
Thank you so much. Go ahead. A big thank you to Ms. Laurie and her department. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jill.
Thank you.
That's where I was going. All right, moving on to old business. Mr. Counsel, surplus properties.
Okay, so we do have an offer on the No Name Road property, and that includes the two there and the Cubachay Area Campground, an old structure. We have previously, the board has previously suggested that it would need to, any offer would need to include both of those pens, so we're not stuck with the other. It's a grand total of .08 acres. There is a dilapidated building on it that, that will need substantial work. The offer we have is $1,000 for that property. So if the board approves, we will then submit that to the newspaper for submission of upset bids. If anybody wants that property, if you're listening online, jump in and make a huge offer.
Just to give a little background on this property we're talking about, um, as he referred to, it's a building that needs to be demolished, and the county actually submitted a request for bids to demolish the building. Giving roundabout numbers, it would cost the county approximately, let's say, $20,000 to demolish the building. Instead of the county investing money, throwing good money after bad, we made the recommendation to see if anybody would buy the property as is. They would incur those costs, and they can assume the property. So what happens now is, more or less, we accept the offer, and there is a 10-day upset period. So if $1,000 is the offer, we would encourage new bids. Every time there's a new bid, the 10-day time period starts over. We hope it goes to 25,000. But if nothing else, somebody acquires the property, they incur the cost of demo, and now it's on the tax roll. So, um, Mr. Counsel, I fully support that, and I have no problem making the motion to accept the offer.
Second.
I have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
No, I think-
No, I think it's really important to state that this is a liability to make accounting with taxpayers as well, so it definitely needs to belong to someone else.
Anybody else? Hearing none at this time? See if... Motion on the floor is to sell. Card took a joke property for a thousand dollars. All in favor, please, looking to five, raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And please let the record reflect five oh. Moving on, new business, item A. Ms. Kathy McGahav and Mr. Jerry Hermanson.
Hermanson, yes. Good evening. I'd like to introduce to you Jerry Hermanson, if he'll come up with me and stand here. He is our chair of our Board of Health, and has been chairing now for this year, and will be chairing next year as well. And I'm happy that he is here. Just to talk to you a little bit about animal control, I think probably many of you have seen articles in the newspapers and information about our past Board of Health meetings, and even things on social media about some need from, concerns expressed from our volunteers, and wanted, they came to our Board of Health meeting and addressed some of those concerns with our Board of Health. And so we're here tonight as a result of that, and I'll let Jerry tell you a little bit about what has occurred over the last couple months.
We had about, I guess it was twenty or so.
Oh, forty.
Forty. It was a lot of people in the back at our meeting, and they were there to speak. Most of them were volunteers at the animal shelter, and they wanted to tell us about their concerns, problems that they saw, and concern about staffing. We use, very effectively use these large group of volunteers to do a lot of work at the shelter, keeps our staffing very low, and of course, our costs very low. But they pointed out a number of things that concern the members of the Board of Health. And so we asked the staff to do a complete dive into the operation, look at all the items that were brought up at the meeting, and look at, in general, where we are, where we're going, what changes we've seen in the, in the animal control effort that we've had in the last five or six years or so. We've seen a lot of changes in that area. Thankfully, a number of the items that were of concern having to do with the physical property had been already taken care of. Our staff there is very aggressive at dealing with stuff, getting small grants to repair certain things, and we were pleased to see that. But we, we did this large review of what's going on, and we looked at near-term concerns and long-term concerns. We divided the study into that. We used not only our staff to look into all these, comparing us with other counties that do similar efforts in the animal control area, but also some of those volunteers that have been volunteers for a long time. We, we hope this, this plan that we came up with will take us into, well into the future. There's no, there's no capital expenditures in the near term, but there are in the long term. The building is, has been around a while physically. We, I asked, and our board members all went, did visits of the facility to see actually what is there. I have to admit that I had never been there. And went out there and saw what was going on, met with the staff and some of the volunteers. It's very, they're doing a very impressive job. Animal control, from my limited knowledge, for the last twenty years, has kind of been passed around between a number of different areas within the county government. It's now under the Health Department, and I think it fits pretty well there, as long as we have the needs met for the residents, dogs and cats primarily, and then our staff and volunteers, so.
So, they did, thank you, they, they did ask staff, myself included, to sit down with the volunteers, and we, so we had like a planning process with volunteers included. And we, like he said, we went and looked at long-term issues and short-term issues. Some of, so the main areas are, you know, probably things that you're familiar with that will probably come up. Staffing, obviously, that's one of the things that came up. Building infrastructure improvements came up, and I'm very pleased to say we've been working with Travis Waldrop with maintenance, and that they've done a fabulous job with looking at the things that were brought to our attention and helping us, you know, get those improvements made, and it's been, that's been really successful. They talked about some training opportunities that, that are internal improvements that we can, you know, take care of and handle. They also talked about, they're going to, they're planning on, we are planning on, looking at one specific thing with the animal control ordinance, which is the, the holding period for stray animals when we get animals in, and that's going to be kind of down the road. And they looked at community spay and neuter programs. So there's several things that came up. The only thing that I've been asked to, as of the most current situation, is to come to you, to talk to you about our staffing situation. That seems to be the most urgent need, the most priority need, and so the Board of Health actually asked if we would come and represent them and, and to make a request. And the request is that we, we are looking for an equal to a, one full FTE of a shelter attendant to help with feeding, cleaning, just in general, taking care of the facilities inside and the animals. So we are here making that request. The one thing that I, I do want to talk to you about and have somewhat of a solution, it's not the entire solution, but I, you know, like to bring solutions if we bring problems, so I have, we, so currently, we have two environmental health technician part-time positions that we have not been able to fill. We've had them filled in the past, but lately we haven't. And we are, if, if you would approve, I could shift that, one of those part-time positions over to animal control. They are the same grade, same amount of money, there's no difference in the pay level, so that is something that we could do relatively easy. We would require a budget amendment, I'm sure, and talked with environmental health about, you know, how we use those technician positions, and we really are able to use them as a recruitment, as like a paid internship from individuals coming out of Western in their environmental health program, but we've never really had a place where we've been both of them being used efficiently. So that, that's one consideration as we come to you with this request. I know that this is in the middle of the budget season, you know, we're in the middle of the budget, not at the beginning of budget, so I know that when we come back, we'll probably be asking for, you know, looking at what it's going to take to be fully staffed and, and handling the number of animals that we have coming through that facility. Right now, I've been asked to ask for this one full-time shelter attendant number of hours, so that's what we're here for.
So you're asking for the two part-time to bind into one full time?
Not necessarily. I'm asking that you to consider one part-time new and me shifting one of my part-time environmental health positions over to animal control.
How many full-time and part-time employees do you currently have?
So we have three animal control officer positions, two which are filled. One has been posted and, and hasn't been filled in a while. We have one and a half, so one point five, I guess one point five, shelter attendant positions. And the rest of the work is done by volunteers. We have a tremendous number of volunteers that come in and help.
How many volunteers do you guys have?
Well, I know there was at least forty-five individuals that showed up that night at the, the meeting.
Forty-five?
Forty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
We have on average twenty-five to thirty volunteers. One thing I'd like to highlight is in 2020, our...
Please come address the mic.
One thing I'd like to highlight is our animal, our animal intakes have increased dramatically. In 2020, we took in six hundred animals. Last year, we took fourteen hundred animals in. That puts a huge increase in workload with the same staffing levels that we had in 2020. And of course, you know, that's a factor in worker burnout and, and stress on employees, so we're, you know, we're asking our staff to do more with the same level, so just, I ask you, just take that into consideration, please.
With taking that in, did the holding period miss it, you know, affect any of that?
I think it does.
It does.
That's one, one thing that they want to come and talk to you.
Jimmy, since we know each other, can you tell them who you are and kind of how you fit in this arena?
I'm Dr. Jim Villard. I'm the Population Health Section Administrator for the Health Department. I kind of oversee animal control. It's one of my sections that I kind of watch over.
Kind of nothing, you do.
I know.
He's a veterinarian.
I'm a retired, I'm a veterinarian, so I donate a lot of my services to animal control just because it's the right thing to do, you know.
He's a veterinarian, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, I guess number one is, what authority does animal control officers have? That would be question number one, is...
What is it, what is, they are authorized to do in the animal control ordinance right now?
Absolutely. If they get a call, and they go and they obviously see that the person that is called complaining about a problem animal, how do they handle this animal? And the situation? Because, I, I'll just cut to the chase. I had someone call me that lived on Lake Henry Road, and they went through every agency, my understanding, in Macon County, and they couldn't get anything done with this problem animal. It was a safety issue. The dog was out there on Lake Henry Road chasing cars, and it was freaking people out and everything else. So I came down from Highlands when those people called. I said, "Next time that dog is out there running a car, call me." So I left Highlands, come down the mountain, and out there was that dog chasing cars, cars swerving everywhere. And so I called dispatch. I said, "Dispatch," I said, "I need an animal control officer at Lake Henry Road," and I gave them the address. Animal control officer came in, or came over there. I said, "Up there is the dog." I recorded it. I went in to see these folks, and when I came back out, the animal control officer was gone, and the dog was out there chasing cars still. So that makes no sense to me. And why is it so complicated for a private citizen having an issue with someone else's dog, and it takes months and months and months? And you know what the outcome of that dog was? They finally gave that dog to, I guess, the ladies, one of her family members that had a farm. But animal control, as far as I know, did nothing to help this situation. So why are we, as a county, as a taxpayer, as a citizen, why are we even dealing with this if they can't do anything about these animals? And it's not only that one. There are numerous occasions with animal control that did nothing on these calls. And I, I can list, but I, I'm not, I have no idea what the power that these guys or ladies have and what they can do in these cases, but so far, I have found nothing. So my question would be, isn't there a nonprofit organization, another animal service that you're talking about, all these volunteers? And put it back in the hands of, of an organization. I keep hearing Appalachian Animal Rescue name brought up. You know, I haven't spoken to them, but is that an option? Can we get out of the animal control business?
If they have the capacity to absorb it, and I can tell you right now, they're at capacity also. That's, you know, post-COVID, we've had just a huge influx of animal owner surrenders.
Well, could we not?
And can I address your other question, sir? The ordinance allows our animal control officers to issue citations, a twenty-five-dollar citation, and then a fifty-dollar citation. That is the authority that they have, unless the violation is directly addressed in the North Carolina General Statute. So they are kind of limited in what they can do. We submitted a recommendation for the ordinance to be relooked at a couple of years ago to the board, and that also involves shortening the, the hold time, so if the board would like to relook at that, that would be, that would be helpful. They can only do what they are allowed to do, and I'm familiar with the case you're talking about. If the animal is back on their property, when the animal control officer goes out there, there's nothing they can do. They can only get them if they're off property.
Well, I mean, it was obvious where the dog was, and like I said, I recorded the entire thing when they saw it, but, you know, we have the building over there, and you were talking about the resources of a private entity. Is it not an option to lease this facility to another organization?
There is a limitation to, there is a minimal expectation of the county as far as the requirement to address dangerous dogs and rabies control programs, and so there is a minimal amount that, that we would have to maintain per statute. And, you know, that years ago, the county obviously decided to build a shelter, and now we maintain the shelter, and we assume that, you know, the responsibility of that property a few years back, and...
And that's another thing. I mean, I, I got a call from some concerned people about the issues with the building and, and all that other stuff, so I went over and met with the staff and walked through that entire building, and Mr. Waldrop and his crew, you know, it's hard to fix something when you don't know that it's broken. And so immediately after that all happened, the maintenance, the county maintenance crew started working on that, and I haven't been back, but, and not saying bad, anything bad about the commissioners or, or the previous commissioners, but I was told by the staff over there, I was the first commissioner that's ever walked through that building.
Well, they're...
And that's, I don't, I mean, but there again, if it wasn't for concerned citizens contacting some of us, we wouldn't know any of this stuff, and we can't fix it. And that's, that's what I've been after for two years, is to take care of our county assets and everything, and I'm very appreciative of the maintenance department and the, and the job they're coming through.
I would hope you'd be appreciative of the animal control staff and the shelter attendant staff. They work extremely hard over, you know, they, they go above and beyond to get all the animals adopted or transported to programs that are, you know, have availability for animals, and we have a very low euthanization rate, a very, if you compare us to other counties. Very proud of the staff. They do a lot with the limitations that they have. And, and it is a struggle with animal control officers and what they're allowed to do in the community. That is a constant struggle. So, again, you know, it would require looking at the ordinance and, and making sure that they have the authority to, to, in, in the state limits, what we are even able to do in that ordinance. So, you know, there's things that we can approve upon. Enforcement's one of them.
Well, and Ms. McGahav, and that goes right back to what I was saying with, you know, as a self-employed contractor, I can only do one thing at a time, okay? So I look at it as the animal... So I look at it as the animal control officer, when they have a legitimate complaint, a response, and they can't do, they cannot enact the, their authority to handle this situation. Why do I want to add another person to do this? I'd love to see, I would love to see some action of some of these problems before we add another person. I mean, if if the two officers that you had or you have are doing one call at a time and handling that call, then that's one thing. But not handling the call, why do I want the third person?
But you're assuming it was, I mean, yes, the dog was there, but they may have issued a citation. And that is the limitation of what they they could do.
I I know this, I know exactly what you're talking about, and they issued numerous citations. And, you know, and part of what the thing we're asking for is a shelter attendant to help clean. Right now, our animal control officers spend half of their day cleaning, and that's time that they can't spend on the road addressing issues.
As as a, in my mind, I think before we add any more personnel to anything, I think my opinion would be to investigate if there are other options to handle the animal situation in Macon County.
Let me give my quick two cents right here. Kate, you'll probably expect this, and I'm sorry, but first, I want to say thank you to all the volunteers. They run that place, and I mean, they really do. Like, that's, I want to go on record-
We could not survive without them.
They're incredible, and there's nobody denying that. So a couple of things that fundamentally kind of bothered me a little bit. It's it's almost like allocating the position for two officers, for two EMS staff, but because we allocate their salaries in the budget, we go and hire two more people to Park and Rec. And I feel like being more fundamental here, I think this is more suited for budget. I think we move into this department, you know, next spring. I think we look at it then, and I think we get into some of the weeds like Mr. Sherrill's talking about. I suggest we hash it out then, just my recommendation. But I think we need to do our best to fill that animal control position. If we already have a salary and a position and a truck, we need to put a body in that truck.
Yeah.
I mean, that that seems like the the most imminent fix or the quickest fix, more or less. Right? And then the other thing, I guess, is the new permit time. What is the time between you, from filing a new permit and actually having a permit in hand?
It's, right now, we're two weeks.
Two weeks from the time you filed to actually having it?
Permit in hand?
Permit.
I mean, I can, that's, they're two weeks out for the visit, so maybe three weeks.
Two weeks out from the visit.
So I would say at most three weeks.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Our nanny's a third position been open.
Um, we have had an opening for, because we've had turnover, it's kind of rotated. So this position just became open because somebody shifted into a higher position. So this one was just posted a month ago, month and a half ago.
Yeah, and actually, we have an interview scheduled for this week.
Any other volunteers applying for that position?
No, they're more apt to apply for the shelter attendant position than the animal control position. And that's, that's where we really are struggling, is to keep the shelter going.
You say they don't want the animal shelter position?
Animal control.
Animal control.
The officer is not typically, we we tend to find, some of the volunteers are more interested in the attendance position. They want to be with the animals, cleaning the, you know, helping the animals. So we've been having more luck fill those than the animal control officer position, which is going out and being a more authority regulating.
The majority of our volunteers are are seniors, retirees that come in and and help with take care of the animals. Most of those are, like I said, senior citizens, retirees currently. I'd say probably ninety percent of our volunteers.
They're incredible.
So we have, we have a vehicle, we have everything for the third officer.
Yeah.
So it would not be advantageous to take the third officer position that's not filled and roll that into one or one and a half?
That's a different type of position. It's the authority position that goes out into the community and answers calls. What we're asking for is a shelter attendant that helps with the actual cleaning and taking care of the animals and-
One of the concerns the Board of Health has as we got deeper into the operations is that we're losing, we have a fairly high rate of turnover because people are, the people that are there are getting frustrated with the workload that they're dealing with, and they're leaving. And if we continue that cycle, we're going to be, yeah, we may have open positions, but we can't fill them because people don't want to be put in that position. You know, the volunteers are extremely dedicated, but the more dedicated individuals are those that work, that we pay, the county pays, to be in that center. They really take it serious. When I did my last tour through there, I was so impressed with the, with what the staff, the paid staff was doing, the things that they didn't need to do, didn't have to do, but they were so dedicated to the operation that they were doing things. And I don't want, and the Board of Health doesn't want to see us continue to turn over people because we don't have the resources. Now, we can, Commissioner Sherrill, we can look and see what the options are of not doing that. That's, as you know, one of many things that comes under the Health Department. And like I said, it's been shifted around over the last twenty years that I know of to different, different departments. It may very well be something that the commissioners wouldn't or don't feel that the county needs to be involved, that we may look for an alternative. Not if, correct me if I'm wrong, not every western county has a animal control or a-
They don't have, yeah, they have animal control, they don't have a shelter. They're not necessarily in the shelter business.
So we're not required, as the way I understand, we're not required to do it, but when the decision was made to do it, then we have to follow not only the regulations that you all approve, but also with the states, the state regulations.
They overs, yeah.
That's the one thing I've learned in three years on the Board of Health is you all have to say so, but so does the state. And and a good percentage of what has to occur at the Health Department is dictated by the state, which is, makes it difficult for our staff to, but they do a good job.
The Dangerous Dog Board is one of the liaisons. Ten years ago, I got drafted into that. I don't think I've ever left it. Is that peace still there?
Yes, sir. It is, it is.
So even though you changed the Health Department seat?
Yeah, that hasn't changed. And then the board only convenes when someone challenges when a dog is declared potentially dangerous.
Right. Is that, does it still function as a court?
Yes, sir.
And I believe the sheriff has a role in that, and one commissioner has a role in that, and use it. Then you got the victim, then you got the person who owns the dog, and they make a decision just like you would in a court of law. And they also come there and present their case of not doing anything to the dog or whatever you, whatever we do, or they will, the person will control the dog, fence him in and stuff like that. And so is that option still out there? The court as such? Or is it kind of a last?
That's a mandated service. So when, we have to have an appeal process when we declare a dog dangerous. And so part of that appeal process is that, that court system that you're describing.
Right. And that's why Mr. Young here will see it's one of the liaisons that's on there, and you might need to look at that whole arena, the Dangerous Dog Board. It it works, but it is a hard job. If you're an animal lover and you're, you're trying to make decisions on the good or badness of that dog and what they have done, it's, it's, it's not somebody to stand around, "I want to be on the Dangerous Dog Board," because there is a feeling about animals. We've humanized animals, and I do, too. So I just want them to be aware that there is a Dangerous Dog Board within our liaison that has state laws that govern it.
Chairman, if I may, I just want to clarify this. When I went over to the animal shelter and all the folks that was in there, very impressed, okay? I have great appreciation for them. I love animals and and everything. You have to understand that, my phone rings off the hook, something goes wrong in the county, we hear about it, and then they want to know why things are not being done about it. So then we have to start investigating. And it has nothing to do with appreciation or them doing their job. It has everything in the world to do with. If they can't do what people want them to do, in my mind, we don't need them nor more.
Well, and you have the control over what they can and cannot do to some degree, so that's something to consider.
I want to move along a little bit here. A couple of things we've discussed internally. I know a few commissioners, myself and manager Kate, I'd like to have a social media account somewhat revitalized on behalf of the commission and have all the comments more or less turned off, keep it information only. We can put the upset bid process on there. We can put the opening for the, the, the dog catcher on there, and we can kind of inform people, maybe you can share it, maybe we can share your page. But I think that might be a good outreach measure. And if you're looking for a consensus, I would rather open up a bigger can of worms during the budget process. Does anybody have a motion they'd like to make or any action they'd like to take here before we move on? I think let's, let's really talk about, go ahead.
Is a decision that has to be made tonight about whether or not we want to approve this third position?
Yeah, it's, it's your timeline. I'm, I'm offering that we have this environmental health tech position that we could shift to animal control to give some relief. And that, and I think that you would need to approve that. And then, you know, that's for a part-time position, so the other half of that request is another part-time position. So I would ask that you would consider maybe even shifting this, this environmental health tech position and putting the other new position off to the budget, if that's a possibility.
How do you, how do you replace the environmental tech position?
Uh, it, we wouldn't replace it. We would drop from two down to one in environmental health.
Mr. Antoine, let me make sure we're, we're talking about the same position. They, they have three animal control officer positions, of which one is vacant.
Correct.
So that, they have money already budgeted for that, that we don't have to do anything for that. It should just be posted and hired, and it may already be on the webpage. But we'll make sure that gets advertised. Her ask is for either a kennel worker, an animal shelter attendant, depending on which job description you use. They, they wanted, asked for the two part-time. We, we have the two environmental health technician positions, which are on, under the same roof, but they're in basically a different department over there. So what they were asking was to move one of those positions to the animal shelter attendant position, and then either deal with one on a part-time basis, both be part-time positions, and/or have you all fund the other one for the fund balance. But two separate things. The animal control officer, you don't have to do anything with. And then if you want to wait on this one or whatever you want to do with the shelter attendant, that's, that's the other decision to make.
And your suggestion, waiting for the budget season for that?
Might, just my personal recommendation.
For both?
Yes, ma'am. I suggest we get in here and into, sorry, I forgot your name, but to your point, I think we open the whole can of worms and create a, a long-term fix for this. I feel like you guys need some, some serious measures out there, and I'd like to be a part of that.
Well, we, like I say, we did an extensive look at the operation of now and into the future, and we'll be glad to share that.
I feel like our time's up, but I feel like we have two items running in parallel that really don't work together, and I think maybe we can talk about that during budget. All right?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, moving right along. Discussion and approval of contract for office space here on Church Street. Manager Kate?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, obviously, you're aware that the county is required to provide space for judges, and obviously, in some cases, we don't have the adequate space in the courthouse. Well, in 2013, county entered a lease agreement to provide space for, actually, at that time, a Superior Court judge. It's actually a suite, and when it says office, that's a little misleading. It's actually a suite that has a secure entrance where the public can come in but can't get past the receptionist. It has the office for the judge, and it has a conference room. That lease, like I said, started in 2013. It's up for renewal. The renewal on the lease is actually $750 a month. It does have a built-in four percent adjustment annually for any kind of a rate adjustment due to inflation. I will say that the previous rate was $600, but that, that was never adjusted for the last ten years. So we've, we've done really well to not have an adjustment for the last ten years. So it's a pretty significant square footage of space, and it's within walking distance of the court. We went and looked at it with Shawna from the court's office. So it's basically a renewal of what you're already doing at a different rate. So my recommendation would be to renew the lease. It's an annual lease with a termination clause not to exceed ten years.
Gentlemen, you've heard the man.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract for office space located at 187 Church Street as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I will also say that money, we, money is budgeted, we're, it's not going to be an issue with the money.
Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. All right, that was easy. Approval of policy in reference to new law prohibiting pornography on government networks. Attorney? Right now.
Chairman, so the state legislature came out with new general statute 143-805, which says that a public agency shall not permit viewing of pornography by its employees on the network of that public agency. So prior to this statute, there was no actual law against viewing of pornography on government network devices. Obviously, fairly common sense that that's not something that someone should do. However, statute now says that you have to specifically spell that out in a policy. So it's more law than it is policy, but we nevertheless are mandated to put it in a policy. And Kami and IT Andy Muncy, IT Director Andy Muncy have been looking at this, and we do have an existing policy called an acceptable use policy that's in effect for use of technology devices and networks that relate to county. And it's just an easy lift to slide that policy into that existing policy. That has, the last time the acceptable use policy was actually approved by the board was in 2015. The suggestion then is to add that in, reflection or section, or under the, Kami and I did this old thing, I've got it in there. Help me out. That added, that added language, it appears on page seven.
It's on page seven of that policy, yeah.
And we basically followed that, Kami basically followed the statute when she put that in there for page seven.
It's at the top of page seven.
Yeah, that's it. All right, so under pornography there at the top, page seven, as the acceptable use policy goes through. First, fourth of May 8.
Nonetheless, I'm a little alarmed that we're just now approving this.
When I saw this on the agenda, I said, "What world's going on there?
All right, you've heard the council. All right, you've heard the council. Thoughts?
In effect?
Make a motion that we approve the policy, the new law prohibiting pornography on government networks and devices effective January 1st, 2025.
We have a motion?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Five-oh, Tammy. All right, moving right along, solid waste. Chris Dahl.
So I think I've taken some action last month, and maybe before that, as a general cleaning up of some county ordinances. And I guess solid waste, I was asked to look at it and have made changes. Only one real fix. Everything else is just kind of cleaning up stuff that's out of date, no longer applicable, or in some cases, to bring the ordinance in line with state laws that have happened since the early 90s, late 80s when this was written. And so you've got your redline copy. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has about it. But no, only one substantive change that's not more or less housekeeping, and well, I guess that is also housekeeping, is to formally move our closing times to 30 minutes before closing, so that we don't run into the issue of we close at 4:30, but we stop taking waste in at four. So because we, the staff needs that time to clean the floors, clean the bays, get the landfill covered and all that stuff, so.
That's at the senior, I mean, at the convenience centers or the landfill?
Landfill, landfill.
Is that what you do right now?
It is, except, except we advertise open till 4:30 and have another notice that says we stopped taking waste 30 minutes before we close. And that's, you know, that's an argument three or four days a week. So it has been recommended by former boards that, why don't you just close at four? And so that's the effective change, will be changing the signs to say 7:30 to four, and then eight to 1:30 on Saturday. And then I took out all the language about the 30 minutes before closing.
We'll talk to you.
Chris, so by changing that timeframe, I know the sign says 4:30, and it says that no one will be allowed in the landfill with a self-unloading vehicle after 4:00 p.m. But if you have a dump truck and you go in, they've been allowed. I just want to make sure that we are not going to say, okay, we changed the time at four, now you've got to be here by 3:30.
No, we take all that language out. We just, we just stop taking trash at four, and that gives us time to button up, so.
This doesn't affect the rule of...
No, no changes there. And I mean, like I said, I'm happy to answer...
Well, just to be a little more direct, that changes nothing essentially, more or less, it's on paper. But you're not closing any earlier than you do today.
No, we're just hoping to have less police calls.
It's less confusing. It's less confusing to somebody, say you closed at 4:30 and you can't come back.
And most of us work till 5:00 o'clock. It's hard to, it's hard to be on a job working and the landfill shut down at 4:00 o'clock. I'm just being honest.
No, I agree. But most, I mean, most of our contractors have gotten into, they show up at 7:30. And so they, they start their day getting rid of their trash and then head to the job site. So, I mean, there's, dump truckers used to line up first thing in the morning. And like I said, it's just a matter of putting to paper what we're already doing.
You've heard the man.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the solid waste ordinance revision.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Five-oh. Mr. Cave, anything we need to know?
No, sir. Obviously, I have your holiday schedule on there. I will say the Franklin and Highlands chamber service contracts, those have just not been done this year. Nothing has changed with them. That's your occupancy tax that goes to the chambers. So that's just a matter of housekeeping. You get them up to date on dates. None, nothing else has changed with those. And I did make both of those chambers aware that they would be on the agenda tonight.
Any more discussion? Any more questions?
I'll make a motion that we set the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion. I have a second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five-oh, Ms. Tammy. Thank you. All right, we have no appointments. Mr. Cave, Mr. Counsel, any close session?
Yes, sir.
All right, that means we save the best for last.
Make a motion with adjourned.
Motion with adjourned.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine, all in favor. Raise your right arm and say aye.
Aye.
Five-oh. Thank you, Tammy.
Merry Christmas.
Josh, I really think y'all should drug this out. You have said incredibly...